I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Pennington County Commissioner's Order. Everybody that's here is certainly welcome to stay if you would like.
They're all leaving.
We appreciate you all being here. Thank you very much.
Grab some food.
Looks like the food is going back there, Ron. Okay. So I want to welcome you to the March 2nd, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting, which has asked each of you to silence your cell phones and other electronic communication devices. Agendas for this meeting are in the back of the room. If anybody would like to speak relative to one of the items on the agenda, please fill out the speaker request form, and you may turn that in to Holly Hinnies, who's setting up here on your right. Thank you. So now we'll have a moment of silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner LaCroix.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a regime and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroix. Need to review and approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hadcock, second by Commissioner LaCroix. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recognition of new employees. Well, we just had an opportunity to meet many of the new employees over the course of the last 30 minutes. We appreciated them coming in and getting themselves introduced to us. It was great. So I'm always amazed at where some of these people have been and lived before they came here and how excited they are to be in Pennington County. So we appreciate them coming and we appreciate them being an employee of Pennington County.
Gary, have a point of privilege, please.
Commissioner Anken.
Last week, we had an employee of Pennington County from our emergency management, Mark Enright, that we had a recognition of him being here for 40 years, or being a firefighter in emergency services for 40 years. That was pretty awesome. And he also got South Dakota Structure of the Year for 2021. So I think that's a pretty big recognition and a pretty big feat. Good man, very godly man, has done a lot for many people in Pennington County and in emergency services. So I just wanted to recognize Mark Enright for all his services to Pennington County and everything he's done for us.
Thank you for doing that, Commissioner Hadcock. Move on to the consent calendar. Holly Hinnies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 16th, 2021. Number seven is to approve the order of organization and incorporation for the Pinecone Avenue Road District with the following legal description of lots B, C, D, E, F, G, and H of Emerald Park subdivision in Pennington County, South Dakota, submitted by the auditor. Number eight is to acknowledge the filing of petitions as application for organization for the proposed Valley Heights Estate Sanitary District by the voters within the proposed boundaries, submitted by the auditor. Number nine is to declare asset 005571 as a workstation as surplus for the purpose of disposal from Detox. Number 10 is to accept the recommendation for appointment of Mr. Eric Bringswhite to the Public Defender Advisory Committee. And finally, number 11 is to acknowledge the resignation of Ms. Deborah Dubray from the Pennsyl County Housing and Redevelopment Commission.
Are there any members of the public that wish to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar? Any members of the commission that desire to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, number 11, please.
I'm sorry, Ron.
Number 11, please.
11. Commissioner Roskinak is asked to remove number 11. Are there any others?
Move for approval of 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
I have a motion to approve the others, 6 through 10, and a second from Commissioner Laster. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 11, Commissioner Roskinak.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Deborah Dubray. For her five years of dedicated service to the Pennsyl County Housing and Redevelopment Commission, it's a challenging job, and you know, I just wanted to make sure that she gets some recognition for her five years.
Thank you. Any further discussion on number 11?
Move for approval.
I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroix and a second by Commissioner Roskinak for approval. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We're now at regular agenda items. Item number 12, presentation of adopt a highway program certificates of appreciation. Sierra, bringing the big guy with you, huh?
She wanted some support.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kira Gebert, Administrative Assistant and Adopt a Highway Coordinator for the Highway Department. We're here this morning to recognize our Adopt a Highway volunteers and recognize the hard work that they do in keeping our roads clean. In 2020, we had 54 organizations that cleaned about 120 miles of roadway. All 54 groups were invited to come to the meeting, and we have 11 that said they would be here this morning. The other certificates will be sent out through the mail. We also have two roads and four miles that are currently up for adoption. Roads available are on our website, and if a group or organization would be interested, they can go to our website or call our office. So with that, I would like to begin the presentation. 28th Communition Squadron, Ellsworth Air Force Base.
Don't be bashful.
He can't be at this group, right?
Care.
28th MXS of Ellsworth Air Force Base.
Thank you.
28th Logistics Regina Squadron.
Air Force Sergeants Association.
Black Hills Energy.
And I would just ask that each of the participants receiving these, if you would just stay around for a minute afterwards, at the request of Commissioner LaCroix, we're going to ask you all to come up so we have a picture taken with you, too.
South Dakota Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Two.
Did they let the little guy come up and get the award?
South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Materials Advantage.
Hargan's Family.
South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Student Members of the American Chemical Society.
SDSMTU Weather Association.
And Western Dakota Insurers.
Do we have any other groups that I missed?
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Karen. Joe, yes, Commissioner Roskinak.
I'm just looking at this. It says 54 organizations who participated in Adopt a Highway Program in 2020, and that's about 120 miles that they picked up. My question is, if they got a dollar for every bottle and can, would they be retired?
Depends on the road, probably.
If I can get everybody to come up, maybe we can do it right in front here. Holly, does that work if we have them?
We'll go in front of the podium if we can squeeze everybody together.
Okay.
No, you're fine.
Scott.
I think you're going to get hidden back there.
All right, John.
Sorry, I'm like...
Want to hit the floor?
I'm not prepared, dude.
All right.
One, two, three.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I used to do that five-year city cleanup.
You would not believe how much garbage is out there. It's drug poisoning, I hear.
City cleanup, we freaking have dumpsters.
Used to, they don't do that.
We used to do that, too.
Remember? Did that for years.
Grab a creek behind Bacon Park.
Yep, we had MDU area with Ron.
Item number 13, request for permit to occupy the right-of-way and for road closure traffic control for 2021 Deadwood-Mikkelsen Trail Marathon. Emily.
Good morning. I'm Emily Wheeler, I'm the race director. This is actually the 20th year of the event. It's typically on the consent calendar, but this year there's going to be some road construction on South Rochford Bridge, so it was moved off. But I have talked to the Highway Department, I have the contact for the construction crew, and I will be in touch with them, you know, as it gets closer to make sure we're clear to run on the Nicholson Trail.
I'll move approval.
I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Laster. Further discussion? Emily, so you're going to be able to do this on basically the same dates as what you previously done it?
Yes.
Previous years and so forth? Super.
Thank you.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 14, items from the auditor, Cindy Muller. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have is a transfer of alcoholic beverage license from Mountain Meadow Store and Campground LLC to A Bar H Store and Campground LLC. We would ask for approval of that transfer.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to move to approve the transfer of retail, on-off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm and Wine License from Mount Meadow Store and Campground LLC under Mount Meadow Store and Campground LLC to A Bar H Store and Campground LLC doing business as Mount Meadow Store and Campground under Kevin McNitt, A Bar H Store and Campground LLC. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 14, items from the auditor, Cindy Muller. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have is a transfer of alcoholic beverage license from Mountain Meadow Store and Campground LLC to A Bar H Store and Campground LLC. We would ask for approval of that transfer.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to move to approve the transfer of retail, on-off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm and Wine License to Mount Meadow Store and Campground LLC under Mount Meadow Store and Campground LLC to A Bar H Store and Campground LLC doing business as Mount Meadow Store and Campground under Kevin McNitt, A Bar H Store and Campground LLC. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 14, items from the auditor, Cindy Muller. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have is a transfer of alcoholic beverage license from Mountain Meadow Store and Campground LLC to A Bar H Store and Campground LLC. We would ask for approval of that transfer.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to move to approve the transfer of retail, on-off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm and Wine License to Mount Meadow Store and Campground LLC under Mount Meadow Store and Campground LLC to A Bar H Store and Campground LLC doing business as Mount Meadow Store and Campground under Kevin McNitt, A Bar H Store and Campground LLC. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item is really just an informational item. I want all the Commissioners to be thinking about what we can do with some historical documents. I've been in contact with Pat Roslin, and he is active with the Historical Society and works with the Pioneer Museum under The Journey. And Mark Slocum is on the Board of Directors for the museum, Alliance of Rapid City. I've been in contact with both of them. Pat has come in and looked at some of the documents. He's very excited about some of the historical things that he's finding in the box, and they're going to be talking to their Board of Directors to see what they might be able to do to help Pennington County preserve some of these really important documents. Of course, there are other documents that aren't quite as important to the history of Pennington County, like old audits from the 1930s. But there are a lot of really, I think, interesting documents that are sitting up in my office that have been sitting in boxes for years, and I just wanted to make sure that something gets done with them so people can research them so that they know they're available. I wanted the Board to be aware of it. I've asked Mark and Pat to possibly come back at the first meeting in April to present something to the Board of where we might be able to move with these documents.
Cindy, I appreciate you moving forward with this. These documents, obviously, there's going to be some documents in there that are not only of interest but probably of value going on in the future, so appreciate taking care of that at this point in time, so.
Didn't want to see them sitting in boxes any longer. They're too important to the county.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Item 15, items from the sheriff. Looks like we've got a team coming forward here.
Move to disapprove these three people.
Barry Tice.
Good morning, I'm Sheriff Tom. Bad joke. Good morning, I'm Barry Tice, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services. And as the memo states, the Pennington County Sheriff's Office and Health and Human Services had an opportunity back in May of 2020 to apply for a Bureau of Justice grant with re-entry initiatives, and so I wanted to give you a really brief overview of how Health and Human Services fits into this with the Rebound program. And that program was started in 2006. It was the first re-entry program in the state of South Dakota. Rebound allows individuals who are currently incarcerated or recently released from incarceration to access ongoing case management services through Health and Human Services as they re-enter our community, which tends to increase their level of success and reduces recidivism. Primary objective of Rebound is to provide support and assistance through this case management. Support and assistance is part of a two-part process that begins within the Pennington County Jail through the start of relationship development followed by intensive case management when individuals are released into our community. In 2020, Health and Human Services had started to plan for a revision and update to the Rebound program since we had started it in 2006. It definitely needed to be updated, and so 14 years later, with the Bureau of Justice Assistance and of course partnering with the Sheriff's Office, we realized we could utilize these experts within the Bureau of Justice to help us with this innovation and re-entry initiatives, and it would be helpful to what we're currently doing with Rebound. Project will consist of three phases, planning, implementation, and evaluation. Health and Human Services and the Pennington County Sheriff's Office will establish a re-entry task force that will conduct an assessment of the program and develop an action plan detailing methods to close service gaps and enhance the current existing program. And again, program participants will receive case management and other services. We find it a really nice complement to the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge. We're really working on what we would consider recidivistic, high-utilizer inmates coming into our county jail, and so this comes at a very good time. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff Tom to say a few words.
Morning, Sheriff.
Thanks, Barry, thanks. Commissioners, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, have a few comments, and Liz will have a few comments, and we'll stand for any questions you have. Like Barry touched on, this is an extension of Rebound, and Barry's humble about Rebound, but he started that and it's been replicated by Minnea County and other places in the state since. Pennington County did it and has had so much success with it. And like I said, we were looking for kind of a reset on Rebound, and this grant came along, so it was good timing. It's also an extension of MacArthur, and this is not an early release from jail program. These are people that are getting out of jail anyway, so how do we help them be successful so they don't come back to the jail and revictimize people and burn additional resources? It is a million dollars over four years. We can take a 10% for companies', you know, administrative fee for their time, like for the auditor's time and some of the other staff's time, that we can recoup a piece of that cost. We've talked to Cindy about how the budget would be set up and how that would flow, so we think we have a mechanism in place, but she can speak to that better than I can. And there's a request for FTEs, and Liz will touch on that, and won't require HR to create new positions as existing positions under the case manager job description, so that will make it fairly seamless to slide into. But I'll hand it off to Liz, and we'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Liz.
Have to move it down a little bit. Good morning, Commissioners. Liz Hassett. I work for the Sheriff's Office. I coordinate the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, and now this new BJA grant. As the sheriff and Barry both mentioned, this works really well in line with MacArthur. I actually talked to our contact there, and they were really excited about the actual recipient of the BJA grant. It's a sustainability option. It's also a way to work through enhanced Rebound opportunity and really looking at what do we do with, how do we help people to stay within the community and not, you know, go in and out of the justice system and the jail specifically. As the sheriff mentioned and Barry mentioned, there were three FTEs that were asked for put into the grant. There are two that are going to go to HHS. Instead of hiring a program coordinator, I'm going to fulfill that role, so then I will not have to hire that third person, and it will be just added to my duties as assigned. And, you know, I just want to reconfirm, this absolutely aligns perfectly with MacArthur and, you know, really the idea of assisting individuals, keeping them within the community, and keeping them successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Any questions from the Commissioners? Number three, Commissioner Hadcock.
Just a couple. So you're talking about people on probation still as well?
I'm sorry?
People are on probation as well in this program? When they come out, they're on probation?
There could be some that are on probation, correct?
Okay. And then a couple of things, and it's funny, I didn't read all of it through, but what I've been seeing is mostly from housing. A lot of times, people that are in these programs need jobs, so they don't re-enter back into jails, what I'm seeing from experience. And it seems like People Ready, that's a pretty good program for people that need, you know, jobs for the day, that kind of thing. And it seems like something that maybe we could put into a program that works for people that are doing re-entry. To me, what I've seen is if you can keep them busy, they stay out of more trouble. And the main thing I'm seeing is they can't get jobs in less, maybe it's daily jobs or labor jobs, and what I've seen from People Ready, and we use a lot of People Ready, and I use some of the people that are in re-entry or probation for the same type of jobs as well. So something that just keeps them busy for that recidivism, I think, is going to be a huge component to success on this.
And one of the pieces with the re-entry task force, which we've never had with the Rebound program, is we've discussed the opportunities of identifying new individuals to come to the task force, and one of those would be probably a representative from the Department of Labor because that's obviously a priority in the work we do. And just to back up a second on the probation conversation, too, we've really developed a strong relationship with court services over the past five years, seven years, and working with their specialty court team, and so it's, you know, it provides that additional team support, so when you start including representatives from the Department of Labor and medical assistants, you can really encompass that entire person and figure out what we can do to make the transition successful.
Do you know by chance on People Ready, do they take people that are in re-entry or on probation? I can't remember if we had anybody through that program that has been in the re-entry or Rebound or probation that have worked for us, like snow shoveling and different tasks of lifting and stuff, but maybe that's some, one of the sources that, like I said, I think it's a good source for people to be able to earn some money. Because a lot of times, like I said, the people that we've had, they're not being able to get jobs, so they're feeling like, okay, they're worth less.
Sure.
Jail is probably better because at least, you know, three meals a day structure, and some of that, part of that structure is going to work every day. So I'll keep saying that from experience, no job, more trouble, so.
Appreciate that.
Are there questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've got two. The target individuals here, what's the current rate of recidivism and what are we looking at as a target to reduce it down to?
You know, we estimate between 40 and 50%, and unfortunately, I don't have the, all the data in front of me. I can tell you from the pieces I look over every month, we're upwards of $4 million in cost savings, and I won't get too far into the weeds on how that's figured out, but we track using the Sheriff's ZERKER program. We're able to identify individuals who become Rebound members, and we look at how many years of, or how many days of incarceration they had prior to joining the program, how many days of incarceration they were during the program and then after. And so I think we're creeping up to around 100,000 less days of incarceration for right around 1,200 individuals. Oftentimes, we get asked about success and recidivism, and success is very broad in many of the programs we provide. And so I use the example, many years ago in my former life as a case manager, had an individual who was arrested 187 times in two years, and he remained out in our community for two months. And, you know, there was many individuals who said, well, he failed. Well, in my viewpoint, this is where success becomes very broad, is he stayed out of jail for two months. So when you're talking about individuals who have been arrested hundreds of times in a year, doesn't necessarily make sense to many of us who have a tendency to follow the law, but, you know, there's oftentimes individuals who are very high utilizers of the Pennington County Jail, so those are the folks we're focusing on. We work with behavior management systems on the Owens apartment complex, which is transitional housing, so we can work with individuals on getting employed, transition them into the Owens complex. So spent a lot of years in the making pulling these different pieces together. I don't know, Commissioner Laster, if that answers your question?
Well, then answer the first part, just asking, what do you expect the end result to be as far as recidivism?
We have, that's part of the task force, actually. So there, the first piece is to identify the task force that Barry had talked about, and then having them really create the goals.
Okay.
And be involved in that discussion. And then also, the evaluation of the current Rebound program is really important there, too, because Barry said, you know, they collect data, but really looking at it as a whole program versus month-to-month, and that will really help us identify the goal. That first phase, they've given us an entire year, and I think we received the approval end of last year. And we have not yet started the task force, but that will be one of the first goals, for sure.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroix.
Thank you. You know, Liz, God, it's been a long time since JDI. I keep looking back and the progress that our community's made from JDI to adults, and then I also remember, as we talked about Barb Garcia with the pre-release, and the thing that amazes me the most with this program is it's going to be with the jail. And I've seen more studies, I mean, Detox did one with a couple of the clients. We had regulars, where we did case management processes similar to this, and we've had some success with it. And I'll keep saying, just like Barry said, two months is success for some of these people, and each time they, the longer they get, the more they figure out how to, they get the life skills to do things better and move on. So I think the case management part of this is very important, and I can see this, the way our community's been going, this will work a lot, a lot better. I mean, I can personally think of three people that I know of who used to be chronic, who are successful now. Now you say, you know, back when this all started out, I used to remember someone saying, what's the success rate of treatment? One out of 100 will stay sober for a lifetime, but people forget that, they never forget the use of the treatments, so every slip, they learn something, they learn how to deal with the problem that created that one, and each time gets a little bit longer till they get to the point where they're functional and they know how to deal with all the problems. Case managers in... Case managers, in, in my eyes, is the way to go because they treat each person individually, finding out what their needs are. Part of it could be put on their meds for a while and then to the job stabilization, that type of stuff. So I think, I think this is a way to go and I think we have been very successful in these years of doing it. So I appreciate it.
Any further questions, comments by the commissioner?
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
So what are the qualifications for the program? Are you guys still figuring that out?
Those are pieces we'll have to work through with the help of Jen Castleberry and of course our consultants from the Bureau of Justice.
Okay, and then how many case managers, just these two, and then you have rebound? How many do you have in rebound?
We currently have two in rebound and then we request the two additional case managers. And Sheriff might have touched on this, but this grant will sunset at the end of 2024. Typically, with the way, we're pretty conservative with the funds. You know, there's a potential of getting an extension on that, I would presume.
Barry, what I'm finding out as well is that there's not enough case managers for the amount of people you have. So then it kind of, I wouldn't say watered down, it doesn't work as well when you don't have enough case managers. So I would ask if we needed to get more case managers in order to make successful programs, let's do that. Because in order to track people, you're finding in probation and other places, you just don't have enough case managers. They want to do their job, but they are just overloaded. So it kind of weakens the program a bit. So anything we can do that you need those case managers, maybe it's not just two. Maybe it starts with two until you guys figure it out. Because you already know, again, in order to track, and it depends how many people you have on the program. But I would encourage us, if they need more case managers in order to manage this program, to make that recidivism less, that's going to be huge. So if they come back with just not, you know, keep, start with the two, but need more, I encourage us to move forward on that because in order to track the people that we are tracking, they're going to need more than four people in order to make this successful. That's, that's my personal thought on this, just from watching some of the other programs and the things. People are so overloaded that sometimes those programs, they work even better if we could, we can make sure there is enough people helping out. And, and maybe there's volunteers and other things we could move forward with on this. But I propose that we do start with the two and then if they come back, I would encourage us, if they need more, to, to do more.
I do like under the safety and justice program that you have the flexibility to recreate or develop or modify programs that are out there to make it work for us. And I like the creativity that Barry, you and your staff have. I appreciate what Sheriff had to say earlier, giving you credit because you're a little bit too modest to give yourself, to beat your own drum at times. And so I'm always, I'm not, I'm never really surprised anymore of people saying, do you understand what that department really does for us? So I appreciate that and I appreciate the fact that you are all allowed to, to put some creativity into these programs to make it work for us. So thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
Move to approve two full-time case managers to be paid by the Innovations and Reentry Grant through the rest of the grant period in 2024.
Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second by Roskinak and a second by Commissioner Hadcock for the two full-time case managers. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to tack on to what Commissioner Hancock said is that, yes, make sure that for the case managers, I've worked in the medical field and sometimes those case managers can get overwhelmed whenever you have a lot of individuals on something. So I definitely have them, let them, let you guys know, I'm guessing the task forces, who they're going to probably be talking to, say, hey, this is probably the, the number of individuals to monitor. Because if not, then now we're chasing, chasing them around, trying to figure it out. And it's extra work that then you're not being effective. So I just wanted to tack on with Commissioner Hancock's point there too.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment relative to this? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chair, I'd also say thank you as well. And just one piece of information I didn't mention is there was only four grants awarded nationwide on this. It was a competitive process and we were fortunate to land one of them. So, super. Thank you.
I think, I think they see that Pennington County is an outstanding recipient and we do groundbreaking work. That's why we get it. You guys do.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Item number sixteen, Shannon Rittberger.
We were having a good day now, Shannon.
I'm, I'm not going to screw it up. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You've got some abatement requests here. Again, same stuff we do this time of year. There's only one odd one. Most of them are purchased by exempt entities, mobile homes destroyed by fire. The one odd one is, is the law allows a veteran deployed during a time period that overlaps the deadline to appeal for owner occupied can request an abatement. And this, this property owner was deployed, provided proof of that and has, has the right to ask for an abatement. And I would ask that you grant it, along with all the others.
Can we do these all at once? Since we have written out?
I don't see any reason why we can't.
Okay, I move to approve the abatement application for tax year 2020 for the following. Michael Ramsey, parcel five six zero two six eight eighty-one two cents. City of Box Elder, parcel six three five four five six hundred and seventeen seventy-four cents. Justin Kissler, parcel eight zero zero seven five four five hundred and eighty-eight forty-eight. And Ellsworth Development, parcel eight zero zero eight seven nine one nineteen dollars twenty cents. Parcel seven seven eight one one five seven, or hundred fifty-seven six cents. And parcel six eight six eight hundred dollars and six cents.
Second.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to approve the abatement applications for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. I want to revert back to the Adopt a Highway program for one second. Here, I understand that we may have another recipient of that. So Kiran Joe, if you'd come forward, please.
Air Force Sergeant, Air Force Sergeants Association.
What's your name, sir?
Master James Beck.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. We, we appreciate you coming in and doing that. We appreciate you and your organization for cleaning up some of those areas. Some of us have been out there and done some of that too. We know what the work is. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. We appreciate all of you for, for the recognition. We look forward to continue to work with Pennington County to keep the program going. And as president of chapter now, five one, we're honored and humbly appreciate the, the certificate. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Sergeant.
If we didn't have volunteers like that, what the roads would look like.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
That's right.
Thank you, Sergeant, for your service to our country as well, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item number seventeen from the Highway Department, Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. Up in front of you again here, the same things last year. We did this last year in June. Just reducing the speed limit on Sheridan Lake Road while the construction outfit is, is working in the area. Just to allow them, if we do have people speeding through their work zone, to allow them to call the sheriff and have it be enforced. So.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Move for approval. I've got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Lassiter. So Joe, tell me where Norseman Lane is.
So Norseman Lane is, so if you're familiar with Sheridan Lake Road, Dunsmore, probably approximately two and a half miles past the, the store there. It's where the, the project ended last year.
Okay.
It's pretty visible right now if you guys go out and drive it. Hopefully got a chance to, to drive it before they closed it. Roskinak, Commissioner Roskinak has to take the long way around now. So.
And, and Rockwood Road is where then?
Uh, it's about halfway. It's, it's another mile and a half up. It's where they're currently planning to try and get to in phase three. So.
Very good. Got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eighteen. I'm sorry.
Oh, Joe, I got ahold of the South Dakota DOT and I gave them the correct, correct spelling of Sheridan yesterday.
Okay.
Signs are a little more easy to read.
Okay, good deal. They must have been off, I suppose?
A couple, they had two Rs and it's only one.
Ah, okay.
Looked like Sherry Dan.
Well, thank you for correcting that.
No problem.
And yeah, just so everybody, the commission is aware, if I may, I guess they started work on March first. They are currently working in phase one, which is from three eighty-five to approximately Spring Canyon or Bob's, Biker Bob's Corner there is phase one. That's their, their main focus this year. There's a lot of dirt to move. Majority of this construction project is in phase one. Phase two is then just an asphalt overlay. That portion was reconstructed several years ago. So they're saving that for next year. And then phase three, which is from Norseman to the, the bridges just past David and Andrea Lamb's property there, where you drop down to what we call the seven bridges. That's phase three. They'll, they'll begin working on that here the end of March, first part of April. So they're going to hit it pretty hard this year and try and get as much as they can accomplished. So.
Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Uh, the next item is eighteen. And two weeks ago, we had Mr. Shear in relative to the cattle guard. And apparently you have come to an agreement with Mr. Shear on this project.
Well, I guess Travis, Commissioner Lassiter and myself and Mark met with, with Jase last Friday, correct? Yeah, last Friday. Last Friday. I guess we were under the understanding that, that we did come to an agreement. Pennington County Highway and, and with Commissioner Lassiter's. We spoke to, to Jase and, and thought we came to a pretty good compromise, allowing him to use what we would specify as a Forest Service style for autogate or livestock guard with the concrete bases. The one that was out there is, it's got some damage to it. It's on wood bases. So we really don't know what we're going to get if we pull that one out and try and put it in someplace else. I did talk to Mr. Shear last night. He felt that the, he wasn't getting any sort of compromise. I got some numbers here for, just food for thought, I guess, for you guys. The, so Forest Service style cattle guard that we agreed to allow Mr. Shear to put into the, the road is, I got a quote from Cow, Cow Country, ninety-one hundred and ninety dollars, so nine thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. That's for the bases and the grates. Now, the DOT one that's specified in the application, we, I didn't have time to get a quote, an updated quote for those. But the last one we bought in 2012 was ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. So if you add three percent a year to that, it's, it's an approximate cost of thirteen thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars for the bases alone. And then another approximately seven thousand dollars for the grates to go on those bases. So you're looking at about twenty thousand bucks. We did agree to do the removal of the old one for free or at county's cost. Of course, with your, that's according to policy. And then we agreed that the county, you know, with your blessing, would, would do the install and they would pay the, the time and labor for the installation. So fifteen thousand bucks versus twenty-five thousand dollars. So I thought we, we came to a pretty good compromise. I guess I'll let Commissioner Lassiter speak if you would, if you'd like to. Yeah, so when we went out there, got to see it all firsthand, saw where he's at. Saw where he took down the, the fence that he was talking about that was, uh, snow covered and dilapidated and things of that nature. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, where that cattle guard is, before that cattle guard, east of that cattle guard was open range, correct? So there was no fence there. Then there was a cattle guard and then there was fencing that he took out. And then he was wanting us to move the cattle guard all the way down closer by where his driveway was. It's kind of the, the end result. And then he would end up having open range, that whole area, rather than having to put in another fence. If, if I understand correctly, was what his end goal was trying to get at. We walked him through the, the policy. We, we, you know, even though the policy says that we had to put DOT in there, we, you know, we kind of worked around to see if getting a, a lower cost cattle guard that still meets a certain standard would be appropriate. He seemed to be thinking like he was willing to do that. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but he said he'd get, he would get the quotes on that and then we would get the quotes for the county to install it. And then that would be a cost that he would pay to the county because he didn't feel comfortable installing the cattle guard himself. And we, we felt that that was at least appropriate, that, you know, he could pay the cost to the county, to, for the county to install it. And then, of course, if he purchased the cattle guard, the Forest Services cattle guard, that's what I walked away, that he was going to do and he's going to get that information to, to Joe. So hearing that, he contacted you last night and, and is not necessarily interested in that aspect. I don't know where it stands, except that moving it, because it's for his cattle, he can open range it in that particular area. So, because he's already got open range. I think it's four miles prior to that cattle guard, right? I, I don't know the, the mileage, but it's approximately that, yes. Yeah.
So Joe, what we have before us is, is the maximum out of, out of cost to us? If he decides to move forward with this project? Is that what I'm?
Say that one more time?
What I'm looking at on this sheet here, the five thousand fifty dollars, is that our maximum cost? If he, if he would agree to move forward with this project?
That, that's purely an estimate, you know, based off of what we've done in the past. You know, we've done some work for the Forest Service as far as installing cattle guards. One of our engineering techs, Kaylee and Chris, our accountant, worked together to come up with that, that estimate. So he would, you know, that could be under, could be over. I, I don't know until we do the actual work. Most likely, it's a little bit high.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
So the five thousand fifty would be the cost to the applicant, not the county.
Yes.
So his cost would be ten thousand dollars maybe for a cattle guard and pay the county five thousand. So his cost would be fifteen thousand.
That's correct.
Opposed to twenty-five. I just want to thank Travis for going out there because we could have had a dogfight here today. And I, that's why I like site inspections, because when you go out there, you, they know you care enough to go out there and look at it. And normally you can get that resolved out there and, and save us a lot of time in the, in here today. And to me, it's just a compromise and compromises, you know, are good for, for the county and for the taxpayer. So thank you, Travis.
So are we looking at an emotion today or not?
If I, if I may, I did get a text from him right away this morning at eight o'clock. He said after speaking with his people, we agreed that the landowners are being treated unfairly. We are, we've given the county land in the past to move a certain roads with no compensation. And he asked, he said, we need more time to figure this out, is what he said in a text message. I did not respond to the text message. I felt that he probably should be here if he wants to ask for more time. That's on him. The, the land that he's speaking of is Cheney Road that kept getting washed out by the Cheyenne in 2012. And, and we're doing some research to figure out what payment was offered and, and all that stuff. So.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
I would ask Travis what he would like to do.
I wish he would have asked us personally for it, but I'm willing to take his text and say, I'm willing to, I personally am willing to make a motion to continue this to the next meeting for him to have time to put together a plan outside of that. That, I think that gives at least a little bit more time if he feels that that was not enough time from Friday until, till now. I'm willing to do that since I went out there just to give him an opportunity to finalize a, a plan. And then at that point, see where he's at. And if he would like some more time, we should encourage him to come in and, and, and visit with the county commission on that one. So I would make a motion that we continue this item until, what's the next meeting? March sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Three sixteen.
Got a motion and a second to continue this item until March sixteen for the discussion.
Nope.
I just thought it might make more sense to just continue it to a future meeting that would give you a little bit more flexibility as we're trying to keep the meeting on the sixteenth short, if possible, and if you need more time. So just.
I'd be amenable to that, to, to continue it to a future date, to be determined.
I'll go ahead and second that amendment then.
The motion is, is to continue it for a future meeting. No dates set for further discussion.
Okay. I do, I just, a little bit more information, I guess, for your guys' information. We have a total of a hundred and forty-one livestock guards on all Pennington County roads, sixty-seven of which those have, they have the concrete bases currently. So that means they've been installed or reinstalled to meet the specifications. So that means they've been installed or reinstalled, um, to meet the specifications. So we do have some out there that don't meet the specification, but that's what the policy was put in place for because the livestock guards are a huge liability. There've been people injured and killed, um, on the livestock guards, so.
So did you say sixty-seven have, or?
Sixty-seven, so roughly half of them have concrete bases and/or met the specification, as I was explaining to Commissioner Lassiter this morning, that they met the specification when they were installed. So they went from a, what they call a flying L or an A-style steel, um, to a square tubing because they, they found that the A-style, uh, or the flying L rust fairly quickly compared to a square tubing because it holds the water. Um, so.
But Chairman.
Chair, uh, Commissioner Haggard.
So out of those sixty-seven, did they pay for them themselves?
I don't know that. Um, most likely since two thousand eight, you know, the, the commission has followed the policy, um, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh. Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Just a minute, Commissioner Lassiter.
Follow up, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So, um, what was I gonna say? So we usually don't tear them out and not charge them. So we were gonna tear this out and then, and then have them put the new one in, but it's not for our need as Pennington County or Pennington County residents. It's for their personal need for their cattle. And that's, that's the difference is if, you know, if you want to help and find solution, pulling it out, that was kind, but um, for them to say that, you know, they gave us land and stuff, I understand that, but it's for their personal use.
Right. The policy is what addresses the pulling it out at our cost.
Yes.
Right.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Uh, Joe, my question was, uh, there's a photo of the cattle guard, the existing cattle guard. Is that ca- is that cattle guard got any use? Is it, uh, it, it couldn't be removed and put a concrete base and then reuse that cattle guard?
I don't know that it would fit. I'm sure we could, well, you probably could. Um, and it, it, you don't, you just don't know until you pull them out how rusty they are. You know, that one's probably been in there thirty, forty, fifty years. Um, and it's sitting on wood timbers that soak up the water. Um, so you, you just don't know till you pull it out and, and maybe Mark wants to come up and, and speak to his experience pulling them out, but generally.
Recall, he was asking if he could reuse that last time and put it on concrete, uh, abutments and I would think that if it was usable, that, you know, a person would try to reuse it, but if it's not, it's not.
Uh, it's in pretty tough shape. There's some, some rungs that are damaged, uh, you know, and, and it's, it was pretty well covered up, so we don't know exactly what we're getting into. Um, and I, and I guess I would, I would, I would wish that, or I would hope that the commission would stick to the policy and treat it as a new installation and require that that, because it is a flying L, uh, style, um, great, so it no longer meets specific requirements.
Mark, did you have something?
Mark Shaw, Pennington County Highway. Uh, as Joe said, uh, the, the cattle guard in question there is the flying L or A, A-frame, as they call it. It used to be a specification that, uh, Forest Service used. They no longer do. They found, we found that they are more prone to rust because of the open bottom. Can get debris and moisture is held in there better or easier than the square channel tubing that's used now. And as you saw in the photos, it's probably worse than what the photos were now. It's, it's pretty much buried in, in, uh, gravel. So by the time you pull that out, uh, there's a pretty good chance that there's some rusting going on that we can't see from the surface right now. So that's one of the reasons, uh, we're asking for new installations to have a, a DOT specification. And well, then to go back a little bit to answer your question, Deb, on the sixty-seven that are, that meet specification, probably a good share of those are Forest Service cattle guards that have been put in because the Forest Service uses a similar standard, uh, specification as to the DOT. Uh, in the grade styles, it's just, uh, the bases are, are a little different. They can be made, uh, they're less costly than the DOT style. So DOT and Forest Service has gone to a square channel tubing, uh, because of the rust issues with the A, A-frame or the flying L. So when we were out there the other day on Friday, Joe had asked, um, Mr. Uh, Shear if they wanted to keep that, the cattle guard that was in place for their own use. And he says, "Most certainly." It'd be something that would work on the ranch that they're crossing with a pickup or their personal vehicles. It just, uh, it doesn't meet a safety specification to be on a public road with trucks and everything else, the traffic we get on our public roads at this time.
Thank you. I do have a motion to, uh, continue this for a future, uh, meeting. Uh, any further questions relative to the motion? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Mark. Uh, items from Human Resources, John Moore.
Morning Commissioners, John Moore, Pennington County, Human Resources. Um, so the item we have before you today is actually another exciting opportunity for the county, um, and for the highway department. Uh, we're requesting the review and approval of a new intern position, uh, a heavy equipment mechanic intern. Um, so to kind of preface this a little bit, um, Joe, Mark, uh, Dan from the shop and myself had met with the instructors at Western Dakota Tech. Um, they gave us an opportunity to speak with the students. Uh, and then Joe, Mark and Dan went back for a second meeting with another group of students that are currently in the mechanic program, uh, at Western Dakota Tech. There's a, a, a real struggle, if you will, not just locally, but across the country in first finding qualified heavy mechanics because there's such a demand, uh, and that demand will continue to grow. We had the opportunity again to speak with the students, uh, kind of gauge their interest as to what they're looking to do with their careers when they graduate, uh, as well as helping get a taste of county employment, uh, at the same time that they're developing their skills. This internship would give us another pipeline, if you will, similar to what we discussed a few weeks ago, uh, with the Public Defender's Office, getting the interns from the legal programs. Th- this is a similar process of getting, uh, a student or two to come in and actually work in the shop with our current mechanics, um, understanding what the requirements are of the county as well as what their program requires for them from a study perspective. Um, so today we're just asking to have this reviewed and approved, uh, so we can actually fully solicit interns to come into the highway shop.
Mr. Chair. Chair, Commissioner LaCroy.
John and, and Joe, you know, I, I like this. I, I looked at the wages and I'm going, "Really?" Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what you're paying the heavy.
Uh, heavy mechanics are twenty-three and a half, twenty-three and change, twenty-three and a half.
And, and more in the private field, it probably could be higher than that.
Uh, I've thirty-five, forty, forty-five dollars an hour for mechanics nowadays.
Exactly. So I think the internship's a good way to do. One of the things that concerns me when, when we look at this is some places, tools. I mean, that's a big, big deal. I mean, are they gonna be supplied county tools?
So they actually, I believe through their WDT program, are able to purchase tools on either scholarship or through their student loans and stuff like that. They're able to purchase their own tools. Uh, they would have access to a majority of the county shops, um, or the mechanic that they're working with. They all have their own toolboxes there as well. Um, so that's kind of where, where we would envision it. We, we have a set of county tools that they would be able to use. Um, but some of the more special, you know, that's a, that's a nuts and bolts type deal. We don't have any of the specialty stuff. That's all the mechanics carry that.
So that makes a big difference in my picture because a lot of places require you to have your own tools. You bring, you're talking five to ten thousand dollars or more in tools. They don't have it as an intern. So if they could start the process, I see this as a good pathway forward.
Yeah, we've, you know, our office, you know, Chuck, uh, who retired in September, um, was, you know, he had forty-five years of experience in the automotive industry and then diesel mechanics and, um, very tough loss. And we've been looking for mechanics since then. Um, we've interviewed some, um, just, you know, while qualified, just not gonna fit with our bunch. So we, 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 Dan, our shop foreman, is very good at, uh, getting the people that he wants and, and keeping him. He, he runs a tight ship, um, has a very good crew, so, uh, they'd rather go without than have the wrong person in there and, and have to deal with the personnel conflicts. Um, and thus, you know, with an intern, I think we can bring him in here. We can get a feel for them. Um, they can get a feel for us and make sure it's gonna be a fit. Um, and then maybe hopefully potentially fill that full-time spot that we're missing. Um, our guys, our mechanics are, are a dying breed. Um, we've got four hundred and fifty pieces of equipment. And we've got every make and model of truck, every make and model of loader. Um, you know, our oldest piece of equipment is a nineteen sixty-one chipper. And then we've got a brand new, you know, we've got brand new motor grinders. We've got brand new trucks. Um, so they've got, now, they're not just a tech going to like a dealership, right? They've got to have the mechanical knowledge to be able to fix number of these different pieces of equipment. And for some people, that's actually exciting because they're not gonna see the same thing every day. They're not gonna do clutches on it the same thing every day, right? So. Some of the students we've met, I'm sorry.
There's a, even on a lot of the new equipment, you have to do modifications to make them. Uh, uh, quite a bit of the equipment in order to make it work for your purpose, do you not?
Uh, yeah, so our, our crew, Dan and, uh, Aaron are, are kind of our lead fabricators. Aaron is our, our, our lead fabricator. He gets, so when we buy a truck, we buy a cab and chassis, um, to our specifications. They get everything else and he builds it from the ground up. Um, John has been in, I think most everybody's been in our, our facilities and seen that. Um, he's currently working on one. It's, it's truly amazing to see what he gets and then what he puts out, right? The, the change there is simply amazing. And, um, you know, I, I truly believe we don't pay our mechanics enough money to keep them. Um, and that's why we've been in here several times, you know. You gotta pay your people to, to keep them. Um, and our wage is just simply, you know, I'm glad we've got people there that are there for the betterment of Pennington County and, and have the ability to, to take maybe that little bit of, of a lesser wage, so.
Thank you, Joe. John?
Yeah, so I was just gonna add that this position with the, the pay rate that we have here allows an automatic progression if we decide to bring them on full-time. So instead of bringing them in at the same rate that our current mechanics make, and then if you hire them, there's, there's not an opportunity for a change at that point. This permits us, as Joe mentioned, to bring them in, give them a, a taste of county employment, give us a, a look at how well they perform, uh, their work ethic, their, their actual quality of the, the things they do. Um, so it ends up being a win-win all around. Um, the, the instructors that we've met with, uh, again, there, there was one of their firm in town and it's a construction firm that hires interns out of their program. Um, for the most part, they're making repairs to heavy equipment in a mine operation. Um, as Joe mentioned, we've got four hundred and fifty different types of things. So this is a variety and exposure to things that they've not seen, uh, which is exciting. Uh, as a person that likes to tinker on mechanical items, the more diverse the things are, the more interesting they can be, so.
So the term of the, or length of the internship would be anticipated to be?
It, it could be the school year. It could be through the summer. It depends on the student, uh, and where they're at in their program. Um, there, there's not any end time set for this at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
I, uh, really like the idea, uh, that I think it's a win-win for the school system and a win-win for the county. I don't know that we'd be going this route if we could find, uh, reliable employees that, uh, mechanics, but uh, with that being said, I think this is, uh, you know, I think there's some things that need to be ironed out, but, uh, I, I think it's a good, good idea. Uh, if we go apart with it, I'm looking to, uh, get reports to see how it's going because we might be able to use it in other departments.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Lassiter.
I was gonna ask, uh, one more question about this. Is this gonna be a, they seek us out or we seek them out? Is there gonna be a, um, like a, um, a competition, you know, because we, obviously for the county, we're gonna want the best of the best. I would hold.
So, yeah, the, the big part in the answer to your question, Commissioner, is to make sure that we've got the program structure in place. We've got approval to do it. We've already spoke with the students at the first year and second year programs, as well as the instructors, to let them know this was our hope to develop a program. There's a lot of interest. So it, it wouldn't be first come, first served. There's gonna be a competitive process to actually do that selection. Um, there were a number of students that actually stood out during our visits, um, as well. So retirees from the Air Force or from the Army and, and who've been in this kind of a position during their military careers. So there is a, a huge opportunity for us to, to take a peek and get them in.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
We've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy to approve the position title of Heavy Equipment Mechanic Intern in the Highway Department at DBM of B twenty-one and update the position listing on file. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, item twenty, legislative update. Uh, just bringing you up to date on a few bills. And first of all, Jay Alderman is in here. Jay, uh, I don't know, were you asked to testify relative to our fireworks bill in committee last week? And on the House side. It's passed the Senate? It's now in the House? Came out of committee, I know, on last week?
Yeah, Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office, I did. It was a week ago today, I guess. Uh, testified and, and they added the emergency clause to that bill so that it goes into effect immediately versus July first, because that would kind of
Thank you.
render our efforts, uh, useless at this point. So they did add that, passed it, uh, so I'm waiting to hear the next step on that. I don't know if it has to go back to the, uh, Senate for approval of the.
May have to because of the emergency, I suppose, but, but I think it passed unanimously in the, in the Senate.
It did, and.
So, so I'm not anticipating that, any problem going back there.
The only question, uh, that came out was, why does the county's authority stop at July second? So that was a fun conversation, but, um, yeah, it was a good experience and I think it's gonna sail through.
Okay, so if you all remember, this is, this is the, uh, uh, when we started looking at the, uh, our ordinance on the fireworks legislation, uh, we had pinned it to, uh, a, a state statute for the penalty. Uh, inadvertently, we believe that penalty was removed in two thousand nineteen. And this is really to reestablish the, the penalty back into it. So appreciate, uh, Jay doing that. Senator Casper carried it for us in the Senate. Uh, Tim Goodwin carried it for us in the House. And so I anticipate it'll get floor action, uh, this week.
Yeah, and with that, just as a, a heads up to the commission, once that's approved, we'll now have some teeth for our resolution. There's a couple other provisions in the resolution that we used to regulate that have, were also repealed and are no longer meaningful. So that's coming out of the resolution. The penalty will be put back in and we'll need to present that to the commission for approval, uh, before we reach that time that it, uh, we'll need to have it in place. So that'll be coming to you.
Jay, thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. A few other things, uh, Senate Bill one fifty-one is a, uh, bill which would allow for the, uh, infrastructure project for Box Elder, primarily for sewage, but it also is tied to the, uh, build, uh, grant, uh, for Highway fourteen sixteen and Radar Hill Road. Uh, hit a little roadblock in appropriations last week. That is up before appropriations today. And, uh, hopefully we'll have that, uh, uh, moving forward. Uh, not exactly sure that we have the votes on that on the House side for that at this point in time or not, but I, going by what, uh, Commissioner, uh, Goodwin said at the Cracker Barrel on Saturday, it would, he would need, uh, forty-seven votes in the House in order to pass that. And he said, "I can give you assurance. We'll have that forty-seven vote." So I know they need to get it out of, off the table from House Appropriations in order to, uh, to make that move forward. Also, the, I think the crisis stabilization bill, which is for the mental health, uh, facility that's been talked about for Pennington County, uh, that's also a joint appropriations, uh, would receive action today. Also, we're scheduled for action today for that to come out to the, uh, to the floor also. So got a couple of fairly major items yet here to work through in the next few days. There's only, essentially, including today, there's only seven days of this session remaining. Uh, House Bill twelve thirty-seven, uh, which is a, um, a bill which Representative Fink, Representative Fink is from out of that northeast corner of the state, I believe, and he's been working with the county association very hard on coming up with the, uh, dollars uh, for local governments for, uh, primarily for match dollars for, uh, federal government. Last year, if you remember, they came up with, I think, four million dollars in that and entitled the, the state to leverage another twenty million, uh, for roads and bridges. Uh, this year, uh, they're asking for one point seven five million and they. and they anticipate the ratios to be about the same, so apparently we're looking at maybe another eight or nine million from the, on that, so. And that has passed the House unanimous, uh, it'll be on the Senate side, uh, this week. Senate Bill one forty-two, uh, was the bill that, uh, we needed a little adjustment on. It's a statute that basically said that, uh, all public meetings have to be held in county courthouses. Uh, we are one of about six counties that have additional facilities where we hold our meetings. And so not to allow somebody to challenge the legality of that at some point in time over a particular issue. Uh, Holly is the one that brought that forward and so, uh, that has been, uh, it, it passed the Senate unanimous and is scheduled for House Local Government today. We don't anticipate there being any problems on that, but again, it's another bill that, uh, uh, just kind of clears things up some for, for us. We also have, um, oh, you know what? No. House Bill ten eighty-five, which is now known as ten eighty-five J because of the amendment. This is one for classifying land for agriculture purposes. Uh, one that we expressed considerable concern on because of the language and how it may impact some of those, uh, smaller, uh, agricultural producers. And so it's been amended to, uh, be ten eighty-five J and I'll, I'll ask Travis if he would like to, uh, uh, add on to this, but that did pass the, the House and, uh, in its current form, I believe, as with the, with that amendment.
That's correct. Um, so I was, uh, remote testimony last week for that bill against the bill, or at least giving our concerns. I guess I signed up as I oped it because we submitted the letter of where our position was, even if they had it, um, amended. Um, so whenever we did, that sounded like it was feedbacking. It ended up passing out of Committee five to two. Our concerns, uh, that we talked about, oh, Jay's not in here, concerning the language of, um, A, uh, about, uh, the transactions between individuals in their homes, they weren't concerned about that. They said that, um, they're going to use some training with the DOE, uh, directors and make sure that it's understood how this should be, um, looked at. I had a long conversation with Leslie Coyle about it prior to the testimony day. And so I, I, I understood where, she's with the Department of Revenue. Uh, I understood her position, but I said, you know, it, the other two iterations that we've had amended because of the, of the wording and maybe some confusion, I said, it could still potentially be taken wrong. She didn't see it that way. Um, so anyway, it passed. I submitted, again, my own personal testimony on behalf of myself, showed where I felt that there were still concerns and, uh, sent it to all the senators on, uh, on the Senate floor. So, uh, I know that they're lobbying hard to get it passed. Uh, they were not interested in having a comprehensive review as we suggested. Um, so it looks like it may pass the floor, but I know, uh, Senator Castleberry, uh, she was, uh, against it and, and, um, Senator Johns was as well. They were, they were the two that had their concerns, uh, with that particular bill. So maybe they'll be able to round up some more votes against it on the, on the Senate floor, but, um, at this point in time, it looks like it may end up, uh, moving forward.
It, it passed the Senate floor yesterday, twenty-eight to seven.
Okay.
Oh, it did? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, next one that I have is, um, eleven twenty-seven, uh, not a big change. It, it could impact us just slightly here to the good. Uh, with all the Zoom meetings that take place at the present time at various meetings, uh, this simply would allow a voice vote during meetings held by teleconference. Unless a member, unless somebody in the beginning would say, we want a roll call, a new vote. So currently, we're doing the roll call in each of those when they, when we have that type of situation. House Bill eleven twenty-six, uh, this is regarding, uh, absentee ballots. This would be, uh, have an impact on the auditor's office. This bill, if passed, and, uh, it did pass the House, fifty-two to sixteen, and, uh, scheduled for Senate State Affairs yesterday, and I, I presume that came out of there, I don't know that.
It went to the forty-first day.
Oh, it was killed, huh?
It was killed yesterday, not to zero.
Well, that's, that's unfortunate because what this would have done would have made it so that you had to request an absentee ballot, uh, rather than the way that it worked this last time around, which was simplified matters for the, for the auditor's office. So, sorry to hear that. Uh, House Bill eleven twenty-six, I mean, uh, twelve sixty-five is on the radio system for the addition of the, uh, towers, I believe. Uh, this would be for appropriation of, um, three point two million for the upgrade of state radio on the Black Hills. And, uh, that's, that's, uh, it passed the House, sixty-five to three, is scheduled for Senate Appropriations today. Senate Bill thirty-four is, uh, the broadband services bill. Again, this is, uh, um, highly important to a number of people, uh, western South Dakota, including Pennington County. And this would, uh, it's been amended to seventy-five million to basically try to expand rural access to broadband services uh, throughout the, throughout the state. Uh, that is laying in, in joint appropriations right now. And the, uh, the one bill, I think we've talked about this already, but one bill that was killed, uh, twenty-nine forty-one in the House is the one that would have required, uh, a change in legal publications and newspapers, some, House Bill ten fifty, so. That's my report on legislative stuff. There's going to be a lot of activity for the next few days. Um, I do plan on being back up here on Thursday, uh, working with legislators on any particular pieces of legislation that, uh, are still a concern at that point in time, so. Anybody else have anything on legislative matters? Okay, um. I don't think we need any motion on that. So I'll bring it to items from the, uh, commission members. Items other than committee reports. Any items that the commission has?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Uh, well, Deb and I, now she talked about that, we attended, uh, the award ceremony for Mark. Am I right? Is that right? And, uh, so he got his forty-year pin, but that Fire Instructor of the Year, that's a pretty prestigious, uh, award that you just, uh, you don't get those that often and, and so, yeah, he had a good turnout, uh, and, uh, anyhow, hats off to Mark for his forty years and for that award. I also attended the, uh, Pennington County Housing Redevelopment Meeting. I'm not on that commission, but, uh, I went and, and it was a good, uh, three-hour meeting, a lot of, uh, information on the budget for the next year. I attended a, two-day symposium via, via Zoom on, uh, on highway vehicles and there was a hundred of us on Zoom and I'm anxious to, uh, to get this, uh, the lady that moderated that, she's with the Forest Service and it's, when you sit there and have to moderate one hundred people on Zoom and you had the, you had the opposition, uh, who saw the concern, what these things are doing to the county roads, what they're doing to Forest Service Trails, what they're doing to the forest itself, and then you had the, uh, the other side that, uh, you know, look at, look, they look at the economics of this and so you, to me, you have to look at everything. And when I got done with it, I just, I, I looked at it as the four Es. Environment, economics, enforcement, and education. And those are all the things that, uh, were talked about, uh, during the two-day session. So other than that was just the, when we sworn the new auditor last week, that was, uh, the last of my items, uh, other than a committee report.
Okay, committee reports. Travis?
Uh, so the Local Emergency Planning Committee, the big takeaway from that meeting is that we're going to have, um, a household hazardous waste collection event in October. Uh, right now, there's not a date or a time for that, but there, there's a, they're planning it. It's going to be a corp, uh, sponsored by Rapid City Solid Waste in Pennington County, LEPC. So that will be coming forward soon and whenever we get the date and time and all that, we'll, I'll, I'll bring that here to let everyone know.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner LaCroy?
Thanks, Gary. Uh, I think the obvious one, me and Travis were on the, the Healthcare Trust Board meeting and, uh, it was pretty much, uh, I think they hired on a new, uh, new doctor, starting last month. That was approved and then there was the highlight, you know, normal stuff that we did, the, the financials. Um, but the biggest thing is they were coming out with a couple of new PSAs for the Health Board to promote the dental, uh, part and also the, uh, public health part itself. Otherwise, it was just pretty much normal business, nothing outstanding on that. I didn't take any other, I had, uh, YFS Board meeting and attended a couple of other ones, but, uh, nothing really to report. It's been a normal month.
Thank you. Commissioner Roskinak?
Uh, the only meeting, uh, Pennington County Council of Aging, we had no meeting because there was no request for funds. Uh, the Building Committee, I'm just going to highlight, uh, what I consider the more important. It's just, uh, the salt storage building at the Highway Department, that contract was awarded the skull construction and is to, uh, be completed by September the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The main jail lobby reception remodel, that's scheduled for early March. The contract project cost is with Mac Construction for sixty-six thousand seven sixty-five. The jail assessment, uh, that's currently work in progress to study, we suspect will, uh, be done here in the next few months. And once that is done, then we'll, if we decide to start working on that, that infrastructure, it could be two to three years and probably excess of ten million dollars. Care Campus, uh, crisis care expansion, we talked about that, there's action today. I think that is what I heard on Senate Bill one forty-four, which would appropriate four point six million for that project. And then, uh, just some, uh, needs, uh, for different departments in the county. What are we, what are, what are we going to need in five to ten years? So that's just an ongoing project and, and so that, uh, pretty much concludes the, the Building Committee.
Thank you, Ron. Commissioner Adcock?
Thank you. Basically, on the Building Committee, we talked a lot about the Crisis Stabilization Unit, if they agreed and, um, some other things about that, that the sheriff, in all fairness, wasn't there, so we didn't get a lot of our questions answered, but, um, we're moving forward. The needs assessment, I believe, like Ron said, is huge. Uh, Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, um, hopefully some exciting things moving forward. We do, and we're working on the review of, uh, our budget for two thousand twenty-two. We're looking in the future of how we can do some, um, I wouldn't call affordable anymore, I'd say subsidized or, um,
Sustainable.
Yeah, our low-income housing. Um, we talked about how we can make that happen, I know Common Ground, um, some people are working with them in the community for housing, affordable housing, but, um, they had talked to our executive director about, uh, moving in or working with us, but we have found that in Pennington County Housing Authority that we can do it best without having Common Ground or anybody come in because we have the financial, um, sustainability. We also have the mechanisms in place to do even better than what even Common Ground or somebody else can do privately. We can do through, uh, Pennington County Housing Authority. Um, we have shown that, uh, through rents that, uh, through disabled elderly and veterans for four hundred and, uh, thirteen dollars or twelve dollars. We have rent for four hundred, or five hundred and twenty-two dollars. I mean, those are the people and the, um, kind of target we are looking at. Again, we talked about this last time, the veterans, the disabled and the elderly for housing. Also switching maybe some of the scattered into some different areas. We also looked at what's called a pilot, um, these properties that are not financially healthy. There's payment lieu of taxes that are, uh, we pay for housing, for Pennington County housing. That maybe we could use some of that money and put that back into Pennington County Housing Authority and use that money to actually make some of these, uh, low-income or subsidized housing, uh, workable for people and make it even bigger and better than it is already. So, um, I need to look into a little bit further of what that means, uh, me and, I should say, me and Mr. Roskinak. Um, we also have, um, Brian Akbach, our executive director, looked into changing the city ordinance on the waterway accounts, uh, to handle for rentals, while they found that it's counterproductive for, um, conservation and, and developing the rules and regulations on those waterways, uh, against landlords and against some of these affordable and low-income housing that they are trying to target and help. It actually went the other way, so they're looking at, uh, maybe, um, that it should be changed back to where it was before. And that's through the city of Pennington County, or city of Rapid City. Um, let's see. A lot of good discussion. We had, uh, one of our ladies, Mr. Bray, um, resigned, she had other obligations. Uh, she did a, an amazing job at what she was doing for us as well. Um, very, uh, much, uh, helped us move forward in our, our, uh, Pennington County Housing, so uh, we appreciate all her service, uh, that she has given us and, uh, did so through a letter, um, that we'll be sending her. Um, the third one is Planning Commission. Uh, we had a lot of discussion on different areas, on water and sewers and just, just the general conditional use for me. It's nothing, um, out of the ordinary, uh, on, uh, Planning Commission, uh, on different areas that we need to look at. Um, the Weed and Pest Board, we're trying to get that changed, so Weed and Pest, because of future marijuana issues coming forward, um, people have been calling, um, Scott Guffey, I thinking he is in charge of a lot of this stuff because it says Weed and Pest, so we're going to move forward on calling, or trying to move his position in that department into Environmental and Natural Resource Director instead of, and department, instead of making Weed and Pest, uh, Board, or Weed and Pest Department. We will still have the Weed and Pest Board, based on state law, you still have to have a Weed and Pest Board. But just so we change that, uh, that position and that, uh, uh, title in that area. We also have, uh, Mark DeSanto that we had appointed, um, very good addition, um, to our board. Uh, we do have some other people that have been there for a while. We do have a new chair and vice chair. Um, our chair's been the same and we talked Jerry into being the vice chair. Uh, one of our new people that is a teacher and has been a teacher at South Junior High and, uh, in Rapid City and just, just a really good board, amazing director, as we know, very innovative, very, uh, cash flow, uh, incentive person, meaning, um, looks at every dollar, uh, to get the most bang for his buck. Um, also, a lot of Forest Service where he's making money off the cutting trees and things like that to be innovative, to pay for a lot of his, uh, things that he needs for, uh, that board. Let's see, what else did we talk about? We bought a couple four-wheelers, one that was, um, new and one that was partially new for a good price. Just can't say enough about that board, just, just a great board, uh, a good cost segments board and maybe also, um, looking at some reserves for the next few years and, uh, remember some of that PILT funds? We might be looking for some of that for some of our reserves, so he's not always guessing to see if he's getting grants and things every year. Where, like I said, uh, you couldn't invest in a better board and a better director to get the best bang for a buck for Pennington County.
Thank you, Commissioner Adcock. Next item was Legislative Cracker barrels. I think we basically covered those subject matters when we talked about the legislative item. There will be another cracker barrel this Saturday at WDT, starting at nine AM for anybody that's interested. Approval of vouchers. I need a motion to approve the voucher in amount of four hundred and twenty-five dollars to the price of LLC with Commissioner Adcock abstaining. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, motion carried with Commissioner Adcock abstaining. Now we need a motion to approve the remaining vouchers totaling five hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Laster, is there a second?
Second.
And a second?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak, Commissioner Roskinak. Commissioner Roskinak, uh, Commissioner Roskinak.
Move to, uh, take a five-minute break.
Oh, wait a minute, we need to vote on this. Um, all in favor on approving the voucher, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Now, accept that motion.
Move to take a five-minute break.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, take a five-minute break. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Move to go to the Board of Adjustment?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Cody.
Uh, good morning, Cusack Planning Department. Item A is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero-one. It is to waive the requirement not to, not to construct additional water storage for the domestic use and fire protection requirements in a planned unit development district. The applicant is Alan and Tamara Schmidt. Uh, they are also the landowner. They are in the audience if there are any questions. The property is three point oh-three acres and is zone planned unit, planned unit development. Uh, staff recommends denial subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero-one, as there is no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County's, Pennington County subdivision regulation five hundred point seven and seven hundred point one. If the Board of Adjustment disagrees and decides to approve this request, staff would add one condition of approval, and that is that subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero-one only applied a lot for block one of, um, Mountain Meadows subdivision. When granting various variances, we look at, um, criteria. So prong one, um, on the left is staff's, what staff's findings on the right on the screen is, uh, the applicant's findings. Number one, uh, no, the request is not a blight on the neighborhood and does not appear to be a threat or of nuisance. However, in the event of a fire, undersized water storage could affect the ability to stop the spread of a fire onto neighboring properties. Number two, um, yes, the subject property is zone planned unit development with three point oh-three acres. Their surrounding properties are also planned unit development with lot sizes over three acres. The applicants are proposing to place a single-family residence on the subject property, which is allowed in the planned unit development. Number three, no, the Pennington County subdivision regulations requires a subdivision of fifteen or more lots to be served by a central water system. Mountain Meadows subdivision is connected to the Rushmore Ranch Estates water system. Plat note number thirteen for Mountain Meadows states that after sixty-five building permits have been issued between the two subdivisions, additional water storage is required. Number four, the future land use of the property is planned in development, which requires twenty thousand square foot lot size. And number five, yes, inadequate water storage has the potential to inhibit the ability to fight a fire in the area and could also impact public safety. Also, inadequate storage could affect surrounding property access to the water. Prong number two, if a special weather or special condition exists to grant a variance. Uh, number one, no, no special condition exists that would prevent additional water storage from being added. Uh, A and B are also known as there is no special condition that exists. Um, property history, the lot is vacant of any structures. The applicants are proposing to put a single-family residence on the property. And they have applied for plat vacation, vacation of plat VP twenty-one dash zero-two to vacate plat note seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. For lot four, block one, a Mountain Meadows subdivision will be heard at the March eighth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Access is Abigail Drive. Uh, there is no special flood hazard area on the property. The applicants, Alan and Tamara Schmidt, are proposing to place a single-family residence on the subject property. A note on the plat, um, that's seen on the screen, states that one sixty-five building permits have been issued between Mountain Meadows subdivision and Rushmore Ranch subdivision, that no additional building permits for single-family residence be approved until adequate water storage is guaranteed by surety. Uh, sixty-five building permits were reached on January twenty-first of twenty twenty-one. The applicants have applied to vacate this note on the plat. Since the variances to the subdivision regulations for water facilities, five hundred point seven were not obtained at the time of plating, a variance is required if the applicant wishes to vacate the notes on the Mountain Meadows plat. Uh, the applicant has provided a letter from the Southern Hills Water Association bearing to state that there is adequate water storage for the Mountain Meadows subdivision. However, it is only for seven lots. Um, there are thirteen lots in Mountain Meadows. Um, Mountain Meadows subdivision was originally going to be planted in phases totaling fifty or more lots. However, after only one phase, thirteen lots were completed and there's no plans to complete the additional phases. So again, staff is recommending denial as there is no special condition on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County subdivision regulation five hundred point seven and seven hundred point one.
Just as a reminder, as we said, the Board of Adjustment needs a supermajority in order to approve any of these items. Uh, Cody, you said the, the applicants are in the audience. Do they wish to, uh, make any comments at this time? Would you like to make any comments at this time? Come on forward. Please identify yourselves.
Alan and Tammy Schmidt. Well, we have a letter from, you know, Southern Black Hills Water System, said there's a total of fifty-six accounts, you know, in the subdivision, and there's still seven lots available, you know, seven left yet. This is right here.
What Don had explained to me is that, um, yes, there are over sixty-five building permits, but at this time, there are actually only fifty-six using the water supply. So if we would go in, we would actually be the fifty-seventh, and there are still adequate supply. If even they go over the sixty-five permits of the water, he said there's adequate supply, more than enough. But he says to say that there's over sixty-five technically water permits, given, he said, that's not true. We will be the fifty-seventh. A lot of those other people that are out there have their own wells, so they're not even on this water supply.
Okay. Questions with the commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Adcock?
Okay.
Um, so, do you have proof that, I mean, saying that they have, I mean, that, that says that they can, but what's the PSV meant, meaning the water pressure, fire flow? Can they put out a fire, that kind of thing on those different lots?
Well, there are, um, fire hydrants out there.
Okay, are they working fire hydrants?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a lot of fire hydrants, but if they're marked white, you might have a fire hydrant that basically doesn't-
No, we've been told they're working fire hydrants.
And they're not white.
Yeah. And when this plat was originally done, there were no fire hydrants at that time out there. There was not water supply, and they have been added.
Okay, and now there's water supply, and that water supply is coming from, is it like, uh, tell, tell me what Southern Black Hills water system is. Can you tell me what, what they are? Are they like Rapid Valley sanitary out there and the water system?
I guess, I don't really understand the system totally, but the gentleman, Don Peterson, who is, um, the, uh, manager or whatever out there, um, you know, he's aware of how many homes are out there and what the water supply is needed. And he said there is definitely adequate amount.
There's adequate, and is it safe? There isn't any, um-
It's drinkable, we're gonna, you know, everything like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brittany, can you, uh-
Espound on that a little bit.
Explain the, the water system, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Moller, Planning Director. So the water system that's out there is through Rushmore Ranch Estates. So Rushmore Ranch Estates water system was established when that subdivision was created. Um, Mountain Meadows subdivision was created at a later date, um, under, you know, the, the agreement was that the Rushmore Ranch Estates water system would serve the Mountain Meadows water system. The Southern Hills, uh, water system, they are a group of individuals that run water systems. So, under the state rules, when you serve a certain amount of individuals, it's that fifteen, um, lots over twenty-five people, you have to have a certified water operator to run the system. So through the Southern Hills Water, that's their certified operator that's, um, working through the system. That's that Mr. Peterson. Um, they're, they are correct, there are some, um, some, or some people in the mountain, not, excuse me, not the Mountain Meadows, but the, um, Rushmore Ranch Estates that are on their own wells. They are part of the subdivision, the Rushmore Ranch subdivision, um, but they are not on the water system. But, um, the way that that note reads, um, it just says that one sixty-five building permits have been issued between the two subdivisions, that the additional water storage be, um, guaranteed by surety or improvements be made.
Uh, Ms. Brittany, it also says that they need fire sprinkling. So when they tell me they have fires, need fire sprinkling on stuff, a lot of times they don't have enough water pressure, fire flow through the hydrants to put out a fire. So do they have enough water and, and why are we requiring that extra storage?
Right, so the fire sprinkler system requirement was, uh, a recommendation by the previous fire administrator, Mr. Denny Gordon, um, as part of the meeting, the fire mitigation requirements, uh, for the subdivision. So they are actually requesting to vacate that note on the plat also, which you guys will see at a later commission meeting.
Okay, so since Denny's been there, they said they have put, um, the couple here said that they had put fire hydrants out there. Has that, was that changed since then? So we should, uh, you know, because first it's fire sprinkler, and now, um, I'm, it's being told that we have fire hydrants, and I don't know when the fire hydrants were put in, or if they're adequate enough of, of fire flow on there.
Right, so there's two different things. So with the storage capacity, you can have the fire hydrants out there, but if you don't have the storage capacity for the water to come out of the fire hydrants, that's one. Um, so when they had made that original requirements, so this subdivision was supposed to be quite large. It was supposed to be over fifty lots.
Right.
Um, there were seven taps, um, that were actually put in, in this subdivision. There are thirteen lots, but seven, for whatever reason, there were seven lines that were put in at the time for the subdivision, or for the subdivision. Um, whether or not, you know, without speaking with the fire administrator or knowing the exact fire flows, or speaking with the volunteer fire department that would be the responder on this to know whether they have the adequate, I don't feel like I'm, uh, the right person to answer that question.
We don't, well, because the main thing here is to put out the fire and they need the storage for that, but we don't know even if they have enough, that's why I was asking you guys if you had enough water pressure, fire flow to go through those fire hydrants, because they wouldn't have you do sprinklering if you did. So, bottom line is, for me, to approve it, I'd have to know if you had enough water pressure, fire flow on there to vacate, um, what you're saying, this is me personally, in order to move this forward. I'd like to know if, if it has the adequate water that's gonna go through those fire hydrants in order to put your fire out. Because that's why we're requiring storage or extra storage today, right? So-
You would have to assume that, that's where they put the, you know, fire hydrant out there, to put out the, you know, fire.
Well, they put a lot of fire hydrants out of different places, so they have the infrastructure to it, but it doesn't always have the storage capacity or the water pressure, fire flow for those. Even in Rapid City, you have some of those areas.
Aren't, isn't that, that company there supposed to be guaranteeing that? Have enough water out there?
Yeah, Don Peterson has assured us that there is more than enough adequate water supply, even if you were to add another ten, fifteen homes out there.
We gotta go by what he says.
Right, so as a point of clarification, just for this, there's a difference between water supply for drinking and water supply for fire protection.
Right.
Commissioner Roskinak?
Uh, very interesting. Personally, I'm in favor of, uh, I'm, I don't like that variance. Um, that's just the way I feel right now, but I guess my question would be, what's your closest fire department? Uh, is it a volunteer fire department out there?
Yes, it's-
Keystone, go ahead.
Well, Keystone, which is seven miles, but then there is a volunteer fire department literally, um, half a mile, probably not even that, we're a quarter to a half a mile.
I, you know, I used to be a volunteer firefighter, and I guess with this situation, maybe we should continue this until someone with that fire department, is it Hayward? Is that the fire department?
No, actually, when I spoke to Nathan at the Keystone Fire Department, he said Hayward is actually dissolved. It, although when you go past the fire station, it actually says Hayward Fire Department, but when I tried to reach them, they said, well, that's actually dissolved. It's a part of the Keystone Battle Creek Fire Department.
There's three different departments.
Okay, so I, I'd just feel more comfortable with, uh, if we could just get a, somebody with the fire department to come out there and say if we had to come out there.
Can we continue this?
You know, we feel that there's an adequate, uh, supply to, uh, you know, right now, nobody knows. We're just guessing. I mean, right now, I'd say, I, I, there probably is, but, uh-
Yeah, because when I spoke with Nathan, he said we respond to that area and we've never had a problem. Because when I talked to him about the residential sprinklers, he's like, well, you're not gonna find a house with that. And he said that was before there were fire hydrants out there. He said now that the fire hydrants have been added, he says, I don't see a problem. And he says, we do respond to that area. He knew exactly what era I was talking about.
Cody or Brittany, do you know if Jerome has taken a, Jerome Harvey has reviewed this?
Cusack Planning Department. So it was routed to Jerome. He didn't comment back, and I did call the Battle Creek Fire Department, talked to Nathan. He was gonna, um, give, give the note to his chief, which I believe is, um, Dale Gaboy, Gaboy. Um, I never got that call back. So I, I'm not sure what the Battle Creek Fire Department's position on it is.
So can we continue this?
Can, can do. You know, is there any further questions? We'll continue for that purpose.
Well, he also, you know, he also said that, you know, wouldn't say yes or no to ha, take him out, you know, is what he told you, right? The one guy?
Oh, Nathan, what do you mean, take it out?
He said he wouldn't say we, we should have him, and he didn't say we shouldn't not have him, you know, of course.
You mean the residential sprinklers?
Yeah, residential sprinkler, you know.
Yeah.
Common sense. I mean, how many people have sprinklers in their house?
I know, but we're not talking about that one. We're talking about the-
Why, I mean, I know.
Commissioner LaRoche?
I think, I think that, you know, as Mr. Drew said at the beginning of, uh, the meeting, this Board of Adjustment takes a supermajority, and that it looks like there's a couple commissioners who would like a little more information from either outreach into the fire department on the fire flows and so forth. So I would suggest, and I think that we continue both your items to the next meeting and try to answer those as much as possible. Are you guys okay with that?
Well, it's gonna set us way back, you know, trying to get our house put up out there, and I'm gonna have to pay a lot more money and trying to keep our contractor. It's gonna be a hat, you know, it's unreal.
I, I guess when we-
Financial burden on us.
Yeah, when we moved out there, we saw fire hydrants and everything, and we, you know, assume when somebody does put up a fire hydrant that it is-
I got one more, please.
Commissioner LaRoche?
When you purchased the property, was there any written literature letting you know that these requirements were on the property?
This plat was. And I had contacted Southern Black Hills Water at that time, and he assured me that there was adequate water, that this really didn't pertain. He spoke with Brittany in the fall. He thought, he actually thought this, um, had been taken care of and was not even an issue any longer. He said he had spoken to her and it shouldn't even been on here.
Mr. Chair.
Was an issue.
Commissioner Roskinak?
I'm inclined to approve the variance, but the problem is, that's just, I'm just one vote out of five, and you need four. If you continue it, there's a lot better chance that we would approve the variance, but, uh, just remember, we need four out of five. And you mentioned common sense, and common sense tells me I don't see a problem, but we got some other commissioners that you have to convince.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I move to continue till three sixteen.
I've got a motion to, uh, continue until three sixteen from Commissioner Adcock.
Second.
Is there a second? And a second from Commissioner Laster, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. So, did that motion include A and B? That we were talking about, Commissioner Adcock?
What's that?
Did that, did that include both items, A and B?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was for A and B?
A and B.
Laster, you okay with that?
I was good with that. That's what I thought it was.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, item C, Cody.
Uh, Cusack Planning Department. Item C is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero-three. It is to waive the requirements not to construct a second means of ingress and egress, to not submit engineered road plans, and to not construct to ordinance fourteen standards, and to waive the requirement for written authorization is obtained from the local water supplier stating that there is adequate water supply to serve the proposed subdivision in a planned and development district. The applicant is Grandview Land LLC Dan Lewis. The landowner is, um, also Grand, Grandview Land LLC. The agent is Gordon Howie and Long Branch Civil Engineering. The property is one hundred and twenty-one point eleven acres and is zone planned unit development. Um, staff is recommending to continue subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero-three to March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Adjustment meeting per the applicant's request. Um, at the March sixteenth meeting, a more complete analysis of the subdivision history will be provided at the, will be provided at the Board of- of the subdivision history will be provided at the, will be provided at the Board of Adjustment Meeting. So staff is recommending to continue this item.
I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience that's here for this particular issue today. If not, Cody, let me ask you this. Is there any chance of this being moved to April 6 instead of March 16?
I, I believe the Board of Adjustment could move it to, make the motion to move it to April 16, or 6.
Good morning again. The applicant did request to continue it because his legal counsel wasn't going to be available for this meeting, and he wouldn't be available till after the 15th. So I could discuss and find out if that would be okay. You guys could make the motion, did it be no later than April 6, and that way, if they're okay with it going to that meeting, we could put it on that meeting agenda time.
I would accept such a motion.
I'd move to continue this item until no later than April 6.
We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Adcock, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Board of Adjustments?
We got a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ross, connect. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Regular agenda items.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item D is the second reading of rezone 21-01 to rezone 10.473 acres from low density residential to general agriculture districts, or, sorry, from low density residential and general agriculture districts to limited agriculture districts. This is a follow-on request to preliminary plat 21-05, which was heard and approved on February 16 of this year. Staff evaluated current and future land uses in the area and determined there are several properties zone limited agriculture district within one half mile of subject properties. Therefore, the applicant's request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current in, with current zoning in the area, and staff recommends approval of rezone 21-01.
Questions? Hope to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve by Ross Connect, and second by Hadcock. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question asked.
Item E.
COTSAQ Planning Department. Item E is plan unit development overlay PU 21-03. It is to rezone 40 acres from general agriculture district to a planning and development overlay district to allow a seasonal event menu slash specialty resort on the subject property. The applicant is Yardley and Company LL, or Inc., Shelby Woodland, and the owner is Rick Johnson. The size of the property is 80 acres, however, the PU D overlay will only be 40 acres. Staff is recommending approval of planning and development overlay PU 21-03 with 29 conditions. When looking and approving planning unit development overlay, we look at four criteria. Number one, the adequate utilities such as water and sewer will be provided. The answer, yes. The subject property has supplied water through the West River Lyman Jones Rule Water System, and the subject property has an existing onsite wastewater treatment system and water potties that will be used. When needed, the septic system is, will be sized for the 200 people that they are proposing per day. Staff did get a, a letter from Department of DNR that stated that they have more, more volume than what is actually, what was originally proposed at the Planning Commission meeting. Number two, the adequate measures have been, or will be taken to provide ingress and egress, so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in public streets. Roads that will be used to get to the subject property are Quinn Road, which is a 24-foot wide paved road, Bigfoot Road, which is a 24-foot wide gravel road, and Kelly Hill Road, which is a 24-foot wide gravel road. Access to the property will be via off of 24-foot wide approach off Kelly Hill Road. Number three, the adequate off-street parking is provided. There will be a total of 46 off-street parking spaces. This is enough to accommodate 200 people plus 10 employees. And that there is an adequate plan for fire mitigation. The applicant has contacted the Quinn Fire Department about the proposed uses on the property. There's also one hydrant and fire turnaround on the subject property, and the applicant has also submitted evacuation plan that shows exits and windows and the location of fire extinguishers. Currently on the property, there is a 1,424 square foot loft and existing barn. The barn was constructed in 1920, per Department of Equalization records. There is an onsite wastewater treatment system on the property. The applicant applied for a conditional use permit in 2018, and that was approved. However, on August 27, or August 27, 2018, the Planning Commission ended conditional use permit CU 18-04, per the applicant's request. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. This was routed around for interdepartment review, and no major comments or concerns were received. The applicant is requesting to allow a seasonal event center slash specialty resort to include live music, weddings, cars, food trucks, markets, community events, beer and wine sales, rental space, overnight rental caber, canvas wall tents, primitive camping, and dry RV camping on the, on the property. Staff, again, staff is recommending approval of PU 21-03 with 29 conditions.
Move approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Cody, is there anybody, is the applicant here that-
The applicant is in the audience, if there's any questions.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Not? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Just one thing, Chairman.
Commissioner.
We listened to this at the Planning Commission meeting, and I'm going to give kudos to the applicant. Trying to do some economic development and some things out by Quinn, so I'm going to thank her for all her work, and all the work it's going to take to move that forward. So appreciate it, and I'd like to come out and see it. There is a six-month review, just because of some of the things that she might need to change on the property later as well. So again, I think that's going to be something exciting for Quinn in that area.
Okay, thank you. Item F.
Morning again Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item F is vacation of plat 21-01 to vacate the plat of lots 2, 4, 6, 8, and 10, of lots 1 through 10 in section 8 Township 2 South, range 8 East. The applicant and landowner is Stanley Negabauer. Other affected landowners are Elvin and Lois Rudd. Location of the properties is east of the intersection of Dowan Bow Road and South Highway 79. It is all zone general agriculture district. There are two tax parcels being discussed today. The larger of the two includes the platted lots 2, 4, 6, and 8, and they are all vacant of any structures or utilities. The other smaller portion down here on the bottom of the screen, you can see, is the other tax ID that we're talking about, and it does contain a single-family residence with attached garage, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment Access is provided via Dowan Bow Road. There is no special flood hazard on any of the, any of the properties being discussed. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. We did receive comments from the Department of Equalization. They're making recommendations to the proposed new legal descriptions. It's a little background on the request. In November of 2020, Elvin and Lois Rudd, the owners of the smaller lot on Lot 10, applied for layout plan 20-43 in order to create Rudd tract and Lot 8R. During their view, it was discovered that lots 2, 4, 6, 8, and 10 were platted and would need to be vacated before the Ruds could create their proposed lots. In January of this year, the Board of Commissioners heard that layout plan and denied without prejudice to allow the applicant's time to vacate their, this plat. And approval of this vacation will allow the Ruds to reapply for a layout plan. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Remind me one more time, Jason, why did they want to vacate those plots?
As part of their layout plan that they previously submitted, they're looking to add acreage to this parcel.
Okay.
And since this is currently platted as Lot 10, they plan to extend up into Lot 8. So to plat, they have to-
Vacate.
Vacate this-
Vacate. So when they vacate those lots, and they're basically vacating property, one property ID for each lot?
So the property ID is currently under this entire section. So these are, these lot lines you see in here are the lots that are platted. They're considered developmental, I guess, through-
So each of those lots have an ID, though? Property ID?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any questions?
Approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next one, we can continue till no later than April 6. Item G.
We got a motion to continue to no later than April 6, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. H.
COTSAQ Planning Department. Item H is the annual stormwater MS4 permit. Every year, the county is required by the state to submit a annual stormwater MS4 permit, since we're part of their MS, part of an MS4. Usually, we have two meetings to update the, the report to get on the agenda. However, this year, we only had one, and staff needs more time to update the, the report, since we've made several changes to our, our stormwater stuff. The county has been granted an extension by the DNR to submit on March 19, so staff, staff is recommending to continue the annual stormwater MS4 report to March 16, 2020.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion to move to March 16 is, and a second, further discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item from the public, and I've got a couple of requests. I've got one from Tonchi Weaver, and one's from Florence Thompson, so you're welcome. Tonchi?
Good morning Commissioners. It's been a while. I've been kind of busy down in Pire, but you will be happy to know that I have used this body as a good example of how agendas and packets should be prepared, so. Thank you for that.
Did you just give us a compliment?
Okay, well, I'm trying to butter you up a little.
Tonchi's calendar.
But it is true, it is true. You do an excellent job in putting out an agenda and a prepared packet, and it's a good example for other bodies.
Well, thank Holly.
So whoever needs the credit for that gets it.
Ms. Holly and Ms. Joan are amazing in our departments.
But the reason I'm here today is because, and I know that you're aware of this, and I understand there will be something coming on this topic. I'm not sure if I'll be able to make that meeting, so I wanted to get on record for Citizens for Liberty. There is a, kind of a trend, if you will call it that, nationwide, to declare counties as sanctuaries for the Second Amendment. We just had Bennett County do that here in our state. And, you know, it's sad commentary on the times in which we live, that people feel they, they need that assurance from their county bodies, but that is the reality. People are very worried about where they stand, and the county is really where the line in the sand is drawn. And I would ask you to please give a good deal of thought and, and consideration, and I'm asking you to actually declare our county a Second Amendment sanctuary. Our rights, our God-given rights are at risk. First Amendment, we can see it under assault all the time. And, you know, it was just a few years ago, a friend of mine and I were talking this morning, who used to be in the Senate, and he said, you know, about a decade ago, there was, in the conservative state of South Dakota, a resolution in the state senate to, it was a concurrent resolution, I believe, to, to affirm support of the 10th Amendment, and that barely passed in our conservative state. So as citizens, we're looking for that assurance, and we're looking to the people we trust, and that would be you. So, thank you, and please-
I have a question.
Thank you. Commissioner Adcock.
So if we do it in the county, do the cities, the, the cities include in on that, or is that, how does that work, that Pennington County is a sanctuary ci, or county? Do the cities, the cities see, or do they stay with us?
They would have to, yeah, they're in the county.
So they would have to abide by that rule.
Abide by our rules, they, absolutely.
Do we, do you have some information on that?
I ensure get you some.
That way, I want to make sure that, you know, too, that I, I'm for this, but I want to make sure on the cities that they can't just say, okay, we're, that's what they said, kind of thing, so.
Well, the city is in the county, so you have the say.
So Tonchi, do you know if there's any effort at the state level with the legislature in session to do something for the state or not?
There have been some bills, Senate Bill 100, which is related, doesn't specifically speak to counties, but it talks about emergent, you know, taking away Second Amendment rights, firearms, you know, from people in emergency situations. It basically is the amended portion of House Bill 1295 from last year, that was amended in as a protection. 1295 has sunset, or will sunset, but that amended portion became Senate Bill 100, and that has passed. So there, that's the only update I have on that. Nothing specific declaring any kind of sanctuary, like statewide.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for your information, Commissioner Lassiter did bring this to our attention last week, that Bennett County had passed such a resolution. I believe that Holly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've submitted that to the state's attorney's office for their input as to how we can, the best wording, and how to have the best strength on that. Is that-
And the sheriff as well.
And the sheriffs.
And I believe I saw on the news last night that they passed a resolution out of the House yesterday, declaring South Dakota a sanctuary. I'm trying to find it quick, and-
Okay, okay.
But I think the state is-
Things move fast down there, and I'm in the same boat, yeah, trying to keep up.
We are, we are working on it, Commissioner Lassiter.
Mr. Chairman, I also have heard that, I think even Fall River County, and maybe Custer County, might be also drafting a similar or slightly different version. So I know that this is on our agenda for March 16. We might want to see if we can't get a copy of theirs, if we can, prior to, and have those looked at, because maybe the language, especially if there's, you know, some concern about some language in this one, maybe some of this other language would be beneficial as well. So knowing that there's a couple of other counties that are doing this, it might be wise to kind of look at them all to figure out what's the best language for our, our particular county.
And then send some of it to the cities in Pennington County, and see what their input is as well, even though we can declare it, but it'd be nice to know that they're with us.
Someone else has a question?
Oh, I was just going to point out that Bennett County took that first step, first county, and, anyhow, I support the cause, so thank you for taking the time to come out today.
Thank you, Tonchi.
Yes, I would like to see us link elbows, at least with the contiguous counties. It would be great. It would be even better to be statewide, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Florence, I have you down for the same subject matter. You're welcome to come up.
Yes, I'm Florence Thompson from Caputa. I, I don't think I want to gild the lily here. I'm, I'm, I'm for it, too. And Tonchi gave me a letter that somebody wrote that just goes into detail about her feelings on it. One of the things I've noticed, several of the organizations I belong to, we have many, many new people moving in from out of state, and they're coming here for freedom.
Right.
They're coming here because they think it's a, it's a safe place, and they think it's a, a place where their rights will be protected. Okay, my name is Carly, and I live in Pennington County. It's a sad day in our country's history when the American people are forced to resort to sorts of extremes, to execute, and secure our God-given rights to keep and bear arms. It's become blatantly obvious that many of our elected servants no longer honor their oath to uphold the Constitution or to secure the rights of the people, and infringe upon them at every opportunity or whim, making one attempt after another to legislate, legislate God-given rights out of existence. Elected servants have left we, the people, no choice but to follow the liberal leftist leads, lead on sanctuary cities, and declare Second Amendment sanctuary cities or counties across America. We have no choice but to, but to demand our rights be secured. The Declaration of Independence clearly states, the government gets its power to govern from the consent of the governed. The Constitution was written for the purpose of limiting government, not the people. The- Bill of Rights was written to secure God's given rights. We do not consent to limitations, violations, or infringements upon our God-given rights, especially holding Second Amendment sacred. The sacred right of the people to keep and bear arms was held by our founders as a means of protecting against a tyrannical government. We the people are the creator of this government. When does a creator bow to the will of its creation? The answer, of course, is never. Yet government today would have us bow to unconstitutional legislation being proposed by them. Therefore, it is my belief that we must be proactive and declare Pennington County a sanctuary of all God-given rights, and especially the right to keep and bear arms secured by the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further items from the public?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd forgotten to bring up the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and officials meeting this Friday at 11:30 at the Walter Taylor Building, and this is our big one. We're doing the election of officers. We're actually going to meet in person, no Zoom. Kadoba's going to be catering it. The topics for discussion is restrictions on removal of veterans from employment, hearing review, burden approved by Tracy Dawson Decker. Another presentation from Mr. Vargo on the legalization of marijuana update. Another presentation from Cheryl Chapman on the water, West Water, Missouri River Water Project, and hopefully some reports from some legislators if they're back in time, I'm hoping, so you guys are welcome to attend. Roundtable starts 11:30, and we try to be done within an hour or so. I just wanted to, I forgot to bring up, I had it in front of me during the reports, and I forgot. You know me.
We would always come back to you, Commissioner La Croix. We have executive session. I need a motion.
Move to go in executive session, SDCL 1-25-2.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go in executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion to come out of executive session?
Got a motion to come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.